Six thirty, I'm calling the Special Services District meeting to order, and we will begin with roll call, Mr. Davidoff.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Counselor Blanks?
Present.
Mayor Cantor?
Here.
Counselor Cortez?
Here.
Counselor Fay?
Present.
Ms. Johnson? Counselor McGuinness?
Present.
Counselor Poland?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Sweeney?
Here.
Mr. Spivak?
Here.
Mr. Winograd?
Here.
Mr. Zanowitz?
Here.
Mr. Ledwith?
Here.
And Ms. Verano?
Present.
All right, we have, we did present the budget on March ninth to the Special Services District and had a subsequent public hearing for that particular budget. As you may recall, our Special Services District levy for proposed levy for fiscal year twenty-four is one million, seven hundred and six thousand dollars. We have parking revenue at, estimated parking revenue at two point six million dollars and interest income at about thirty-two thousand dollars for total revenue of four million, three hundred and thirty-eight thousand, five hundred and eighty-six dollars, offset by expenditures, parking operation expenditures of seven hundred and one thousand, five hundred and eighty-six dollars, as well as license fees at the town of West Hartford totaling three point six million dollars for a total offset in expenditures of four million, three hundred and thirty-eight thousand, five hundred and eighty-six dollars.
Thank you, Mr. Ledwith.
You're welcome.
Are there any questions, comments? Okay, seeing and hearing none, we will go to a roll call vote. I'll just open it up one more time, making sure there's no questions or comments. All right, we will go to roll call vote. Mr. Davidoff?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Counselor Blanks?
Yes.
Mayor Cantor?
Yes.
Counselor Cortez?
Yes.
Counselor Fay?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson? Counselor McGuinness?
Yes.
Counselor Poland?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Sweeney?
Yes.
Mr. Spivak?
Yes.
Mr. Winograd?
Yes.
Counselors Zanowitz?
Yes.
Passed unanimously.
Thank you, Mr. Bassinesis, that's how I say it, wonderful. Nice to have you with us. We will then go to three A, Mr. Sweeney.
Madam Mayor, make a motion to approve the minutes of the special meeting from March eighth.
Second.
Motion's been made in second, and I realize I did jump over public forum, there's no one in the room, but I think we should probably check the list to make sure that there's nobody signed up. I just assumed, okay, there's nobody signed up, so, all right, motion's been made in second, and all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, motion carries. B, Mr. Sweeney?
Madam Mayor, I make a motion to approve the minutes from the budget public hearing on March twenty-seventh, two thousand and twenty-three.
Second.
Motion's been made in seconded, all those in favor? Aye. Any opposed, motion carries. We have no petitions, no consent calendar, no communications, we will go to seven A, Mr. Sweeney.
Madam Mayor, I make a motion to adopt the resolution to adopt the annual budget for the fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four, in the imposition of a tax levy of each land use category thereafter.
Second.
Motion's been made in second, and Mr. Ledwith, or is that okay if you do a little summary?
Sure, absolutely, thank you, Madam Mayor. So, we have, we did present the budget on March ninth to the Special Services District and had a subsequent public hearing for that particular budget. As you may recall, our Special Services District levy for, proposed levy for fiscal year twenty-four is one million, seven hundred and six thousand dollars. We have parking revenue at, estimated parking revenue at two point six million dollars and interest income at about thirty-two thousand dollars for total revenue of four million, three hundred and thirty-eight thousand, five hundred and eighty-six dollars, offset by expenditures, parking operation expenditures of seven hundred and one thousand, five hundred and eighty-six dollars, as well as license fees at the town of West Hartford totaling three point six million dollars for a total offset in expenditures of four million, three hundred and thirty-eight thousand, five hundred and eighty-six dollars.
Thank you, Mr. Ledwith.
You're welcome.
Are there any questions, comments? Okay, seeing and hearing, none, we will go to a roll call vote. I'll just open it up one more time, making sure there's no questions or comments. All right, we will go to roll call vote. Mr. Davidoff?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Counselor Blanks?
Yes.
Mayor Cantor?
Yes.
Counselor Cortez?
Yes.
Counselor Fay?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson? Counselor McGuinness?
Yes.
Counselor Poland?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Sweeney?
Yes.
Mr. Spivak?
Yes.
Counselor Winograd?
Yes.
Counselors Zanowitz?
Yes.
Passed unanimously.
Thank you, would you like me to see Mr. Davidoff or Mr. Clark? I don't know, anyway, okay, you'll let me know. All right, we have no new business, no consent calendar, no staff reports, no executive session, correct? And with that, Mr. Sweeney, number twelve?
Yes, Madam Mayor, without objection, I move to adjourn.
Without objection? Any objection? We are now adjourned. Have a good evening, that was quick.
One of the things, if you want to, we, I mean, there's...
All right, I am calling the Town Council, Tuesday, April twenty-fifth, Budget Adoption, formerly known as the Budget, informally known as Budget Adoption Night, meeting to order, and we will begin with roll call, Mr. Davidoff.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Counselor Blanks?
Present.
Mayor Cantor?
Here.
Counselor Cortez?
Here.
Counselor Fay?
Present.
Counselor McGuinness?
Present.
Counselor Poland?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Sweeney?
Here.
Counselor Winograd?
Present.
Counselors Zanowitz?
Present.
Thank you, Mr. Davidoff. So, we now are going to public forum, but I just want to explain that items seven A through seven E are related to the budget and have already been subject of public hearings on March twenty-seventh and April third, there is no one signed up, so, that's all I will say about that. And we will also now go to the Pledge of Allegiance, thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, and now that we've already done roll call, we are now down to five A, Mr. Sweeney.
Madam Mayor, make a motion to approve the Town Council meeting minutes from April eleventh, two thousand and twenty-three.
Second.
Motion's been made in seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, motion carries. Seven A, Mr. Sweeney.
Yes, Madam Mayor, I make a motion to adopt the ordinance concerning appropriations for the fiscal year beginning July first, two thousand and twenty-three.
Second.
Motion's been made in second, and Mr. Ledwith, could you talk about, this is a little funky because it all relates to each other, but we are talking about a few things separately, especially because they've been amended, and we've had some changes since our last meeting and definitely since you presented your budget, so if you could summarize.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So, just as a quick recall, you, on March eighth, we did present, our leadership team presented a joint town and Board of Education budget to the Town Council that called for an increase in the mill rate, as you may recall, from forty point six eight to forty point nine six. That resulted in an average tax increase of one point eight seven percent. Since that meeting, we have, this council has met seven times to deliberate this budget. We also had two public hearings, and the Board of Education met, and two separate budget workshops along with the budget, public hearing as well. And since that night, we have, the results of those deliberations did have an impact on what we would like to discuss tonight, and I did pass around a spreadsheet for everyone to follow along with the changes that we are recommending for your consideration this evening. So, I'll first start with the revenue adjustments. We are recommending that we increase investment earnings by five hundred thousand dollars. As the council knows, we do invest our funds, our short-term funds, in the State of Connecticut's Short Term Investment Fund. Last year, we had budgeted about two hundred and eighty thousand dollars in investment income that we were expecting to earn through the STIF account, and since that time, as we all know, we have seen our interest rates drive, rise pretty dramatically. dramatically, along with inflation. The result of that was a very positive impact on our earnings as a result of participating in the STIF fund. So, we are expecting to earn about $3.2 million in investment earnings this fiscal year that we're in right now. So, we budgeted for, you know, back in January, February, we budgeted $1.75 million for next year, not knowing exactly what interest rates would do. However, based on information we're reading from various economists, we do expect, we're right now earning about 4.75 to 4.95% in the STIF account. We are expecting to maintain that rate at least through the end of 2023, hopefully. And then we would expect to see that rate start to drop in 2024, and by the end of 2024, expect to see that rate back to possibly where it was before, in the low twos. However, we're only looking to make it from January of '24 to July, June 30th of '24. So we feel very confident in increasing our investment earnings in the STIF account from $1.75 million to $2.25 million. So that's an increase in revenue of $500,000. We did, at our last Finance and Administration meeting, talk about some of these other revenue adjustments that you see before you. So we have a transferring of $111,000 from the capital reimbursement account, $5,300 from a telephone grant, $19,000 from a land lease, an additional $50,000 in building permits, and then an additional $13,340 as a result of additional fire plan reviews due to the increase in the fire inspector with this budget. So that's a revenue adjustment of $699,581. In our Finance and Administration meeting, we also talked about the Board of Assessment Appeals. They were not completed with that process prior to us presenting the budget in early March. Since then, we have reduced the gross grant list by, I believe it's 900 and, we had budgeted about $5.75 million in potential adjustments to our gross grant lists, and that, as a result of the appeal process through the Board of Assessment Appeals, that number dropped down to $938,000, resulting in an increase in revenue of $240,448 for a net revenue adjustment of $940,000. On the expense side, and all of these, we did talk through during that Finance and Administration meeting, we talked about the increase in the contribution to the Interpol House. They provide a very valuable service to our community, and based on our utilization and where we compare to other communities who also take advantage of these services, our contribution that we made to the Interpol House was lower than it really should have been. So we would recommend increasing that dollar amount by $7,150. And then, you may recall, in the Town Manager's original budget, we had recommended using ARPA funds to fund two police officers, one fire inspector, and one librarian, too. And through our deliberations, the council has requested us to move those positions from utilizing ARPA funds back into the general fund. So that resulted in a net expenditure adjustment of $690,000. That will leave us with excess revenue of $250,000, which we would recommend providing to the Board of Education. As you will recall, the Board of Education adopted a budget that was $183,000 higher than the superintendent's proposed budget, and that additional, those additional funds were to be used to add back in a STEM teaching position, as well as to fund the pay-for-play program that the schools utilize. That was about $183,000 that they had increased their budget by. However, we're recommending putting $250,000 into the school budget. Last Friday, our district received some bad news from the State of Connecticut. We, every community in the state takes advantage of what's called an excess cost reimbursement grant, so we are reimbursed. It's the state's way of helping communities offset the costs of special education services. So it's based on a formula, a very complicated formula, but in the end, we budgeted for an 85% reimbursement. We were told last Friday that we should expect 73.7% reimbursement on our excess costs, resulting in a $700,000 shortfall this fiscal year for our colleagues on the school side. So, I've had conversations with Director Finance and with our superintendent. They will be working very hard as we close out the school year to make up that shortfall this year, but this additional funds would potentially help out the school district next year, as we do expect, again, we all know, special education costs just continue to escalate every single year. We would expect that to happen again next year, leaving us with a potential shortfall for next year as well, because the schools budgeted where we always expect to, at that 85%. So this will give them not much, but a little bit of a cushion to assist with that next year, if the council were to support that move. So, the end result would be a mill rate that would reduce from 40.96 to 40.92, and reduce our overall tax increase on average from 1.87% down to 1.86%. So, I will pause there, and through you, Madam Mayor, turn it back to you and the council for any follow-up questions that you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Ledwith. I just have one follow-up question on a late request we had gotten from our Veterans Commission on adding $1,000 to, for their, so I just didn't know how that was a...
Yeah, so we're going to add an additional $1,000 to the Veterans Affairs Commission, Peter. So, we will, we'll manage it. We'll make, we'll make that appropriate.
I figured that would work, but I just want to make sure that everybody is aware that we, that was something, and, you know, if there's discussion on that, please let me know. So this kind of came, it just, it came from the Chair of the Commission and a couple of members of the Commission that supported being able to communicate with veterans that have been identified through some activities that Lieutenant Governor actually initiated, and we have a better list of current veterans that might not be receiving help, but are veterans in our community. So, all right. So I thought we, we really generally move all of our ordinances together. We have a couple of amendments, so, but I would, like, take this time to go around the table and talk about the budget. Everybody spends a lot of time. We have, as our Town Manager has said, a lot of meetings, a lot of discussion, a lot of thought, internal discussions as well with our caucuses, about, this is the most important thing that we do in the operation of our town and that we oversee. So, we will start with the Chair of our Finance and Administration, our Deputy Mayor, Mr. Sweeney.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. First, before I get started, I want to thank the Town Manager and the staff that is here tonight, Peter, Helen, Greta, who's not here, but in spirit, for keeping us all in line throughout the multiple meetings that we had, and to all of the directors that participated in every meeting that we had thus far. I want to thank the council members for the due diligence that everyone did in this process. This is the most important thing that we do every year, and it was, it was great working, and we had some new hands on deck this year, with two folks, one person just jumping straight into budget season, Tiffany. And I think everyone did a very, an excellent job with doing that. That being said, I think that when we started this budget season, we saw increases across the state, averaging around 5% to 6% at the municipal level, skyrocketing costs in the school districts. And I think what we see here tonight is the investment that we have made as a town paying off on kind of rounding that curve that we were anticipating coming here to town. And I think, like, there are kind of three kind of main things that this budget does that invest in our, in our schools, which we have heard lots of people talk about. There's so much going on in schools right now, where people are finally coming back and recovering from COVID, but because of that, there'd been, and escalated costs in doing that. And our school district is not, was not shielded from that, and in fact, they incurred a lot of costs, but they did a great job of bringing it in and focusing on the important things, and we appreciate the feedback and the dialogue that we had with them throughout that process. And I think that's the big investment that we make in our town, and that's what has made West Hartford, and has been described by the New York Times, various different outlets, as one of the most desired places to live. You know, let's make no mistake, the reason for that is because of our schools, right? The investment that we make in our kids here, and the ability for people to raise their kids in a public school system that, that runs aside any, any private school. I think you're getting the same education you hear. It's one of the top, two top 10 schools in the country, in the state, and a top 100 in the country, which you don't get to see a lot in public schools. So, I think that is a huge thing. I think the other thing that this budget does is it has money that leads to allowing for us to protect our community. I think there, we started off this year where there was some tragedy in town, and because of that, I think, what I also like about this budget is it directs us on policy. It gives us a vision, and I think that's what people look at when they look at budget. They want to know, what is the direction? What is the overall goal of this council? What do you want to accomplish? And you can see that, I think there's been lots of statements of budgets are, quote-unquote, "moral documents." I think that what they are is more of, they lay forth a direction of the community and the strategy of the leadership. And I think what we see here is an investment in, one, you know, adding police officers to the force to allow for us to move in the direction of the Vision Zero that the mayor has, so, well brought us on that path to help make this community more safe for the folks that are here, that are trying to use this, all of the facilities that we have in town that are rapidly growing. And then I think because of that, we're going to need, you know, police officers to do more, and we talked about this with the chief in Chairman Blanks' committee, and I think she will talk more about that, but I think just overall, we see, we are investing in our police force here and also in the capital budget as well. And then the other thing that we do is we add a fire inspector in here as well. That, we have seen this across, with the development that we're having in town, we need that. We have rapid growth going on. We have sat through, this body has adopted and moved forward multiple hundreds of units, and we need the ability to move in the right direction, and that's the investment, again, that we're making. But I think what, the three pillars of investing, protecting, and letting it grow, and what we're seeing is because of those, those big pillars that we have done in this budget, we are seeing the town grow in the right way. We are seeing development, as I just touched on, all over town, and people want to be here. But we, without these, all three of these things connect with one another, and I think that what we, what we're seeing here today is a budget that continues to have a vision for this community, continues to keep us ahead of the curve. We see other communities emulating what we're doing. I think just last week, or last council meeting, when we were considering the outside dining ordinance, the mayor spoke with the head of the Restaurants Association. They want to replicate that ordinance throughout the, throughout the state. The other, the other piece of this in the committee that I think Deb will touch on in her, in her comments, is the investment that we're making in our youth at the lower, at the community level, the investment that we're making in our golf course, which will bring us into a new age of seeing people use that public facility the way that it should be used. Just, there's so many different ways in here that we continue to stay ahead of things, and it makes me feel good to be a part of a community that continues to not rest, but continue to invest in itself and to allow for it to continue to evolve. And then, and lastly, I will say that, you know, one of the things that was troubling when we were going through this budget is that, the thing that the Town Manager touched on, is that we weren't investing in the women that were really in trouble during COVID, and those are the folks that were using Interpol House. And what we do here is we, we contribute to that in a meaningful way that we haven't really done historically here. And with all of those things combined, you know, we, we had a great budget process. I believe this is a, this is a huge step in the right direction. I, it is great to see that we are reducing the mill rate from the Town Manager's original proposal. We will be adding in $250,000 to the schools to allow for them to do what they wish with that. Again, without the schools, this town is not what it is, and that's why people live here. That's why the home values are what they are. And with that, Madam Mayor, I strongly support this and am glad to be voting in favor of this.
Thank you, Mr. Sweeney. And then we'll go to Ms. Fay.
Thank you, Mayor Cantor. Yeah, there was a lot of thought, excuse me, and work put into this budget by everybody around this table and those behind the scenes. I see a lot of them in the audience today, so thank you for that. And budgets are always hard. They're always extremely difficult to get the right emphasis on the right things, invest in our town, which is clearly important, invest in our businesses through the outdoor dining and other ordinances equally, but I still struggle with the impact to the taxpayers. We knew coming, am I on here? I think I am. Thank you. I knew, we knew coming in here that they were already going to face, across the board, a tax increase because of the phase-in of last year's revaluation, and we couldn't do anything about that. That was a state, we have to do it every so many years, and we chose to soften the blow last year by phasing in 25% this year. So without doing anything, raising one expense, you're already going to get hit with a tax increase. Again, I hope it was explained well last time, but, and then on top of that, you're going to get a modest one with this new budget. So, I really do worry about that. I worry about the financial headwinds we're going to be facing, all of us. The layoffs have already started. We can argue to the cows come home, whether we're in a recession, whether we were in a recession, technical definitions change, but nobody doesn't see us going into a recession later part of this year and beginning part of next year. So I worry about people being able to stay in their homes. I love our police force and our public safety. I think I'd agree with Carol. You've done a great job on leading that committee and very fond of them, and I think that's where money absolutely positively needs to go. But when I look at the budget, and it's $350 million between the school and the town, that's a lot of money, and the data that I was given yesterday shows that we would have to reduce it by 1.8 million, which is a half a percent. I mean, it's not even, it's a rounding error practically, and we wouldn't raise the mill rate or raise taxes going forward. So, I just kind of find it astonishing that we can't find that, you know, with a $350 million budget, we can't find 1.8 million. And I just, I just really think that the taxpayers, we got to watch out for them. We're getting to a tipping point. These positions, I know police and fire are absolutely needed, the librarians, fantastic, we need that, but every time we add, it never goes back down. And I know we've grown our grant list, and I just don't see the taxpayers getting the benefit of that. And I have gotten a lot of complaints from seniors in particular, and we're trying to help them, and our solutions are ADUs, so you can collect more rent to offset your property taxes, but I really think we need to start really driving budget, budgetary changes going forward. I got to believe we could find that 1.8 million pretty quickly. So, those are my comments, and again, if you read my emails and saw the people that are concerned, I know they don't always come out to public hearings, for whatever reason they don't, so it might feel like there's not a lot of opposition to an increase in the budget, but I'd suggest that what you see is not always what you hear, and I would just like to see us have... And I I would just like to see us have taxpayers more more at the the front of our mind when we do these things. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Fay. And the other member of the Finance and Administration Committee is Ms. Pullen.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and thank you to all of you. It's my privilege to share with you that human and community service is part of the budget, so I'll just walk us through that. There is just so much that makes West Hartford a great community. Of course, our public safety professionals, all of our wonderful neighborhoods, our opportunities for work and shop shopping and dining. And here in these departments that I'm going to present, we have just a few of the items that enrich the experience of living here in West Hartford. For those of you following along on the budget book, I'll start with section 13. This is our Department of Leisure and Social Services. A few highlights from the past year. We have done a great job keeping up our parks and done some improvements to various facilities and fields, including pickleball courts, a gaga pit, and new bleachers at Cornerstone Aquatic Center. We also have done some really unique projects, like the West Hartford Tree Project and a new bird sanctuary garden at Spice Bush Swamp. On the social services side, we hired an Assistant Director of Social Services in recognition of the need for greater focus on connecting residents to resources that they need. We've also expanded our food pantry operations, and we've done a ton of planning work for our new Elmwood Community Center slash Library slash Senior Center slash Teen Facility that's going to really improve programs and services across town. So moving into next year, we're going to keep up with all of that, of course, and we have some exciting new projects and services as well. A few highlights in the general fund for this department, it's basically flat funding, couple of little tweaks here and there, which represent things like combining all the advertising into one line item with a corresponding decrease elsewhere. We also house our senior center funding in this section. So I just wanted to note that our senior center memberships are not yet to where they were prior to the pandemic. We are trending in the right direction and encourage our older adults across town to join one of the senior centers. We also have the Leisure Services Fund as part of this section, and this is where we house both the revenues and the expenditures for the skating rink, the golf courses, the pools, and a couple of other items. We have traditionally struggled to keep this fund in the black. However, we do anticipate hitting the mark this year as well as next year. This is due to some creative scheduling and enhanced focus on tight management. So great job to all of those involved with that. You'll also see in the capital budget some general upkeep and improvements. And I want to highlight, as Council Councilperson Sweeney mentioned earlier, that we have some exciting plans for the driving range at Rockledge, which I know many people will enjoy once that's complete. Moving on to section 14, our libraries. I just want to highlight a few new projects and items that have been brought to our town this year by our library team. We have a puzzle library. We have a seed library, and we're expanding services in the digital maker space. We have a welcome baby program and a tech help program. Those are just a few of the new services you can get at our libraries across town. Moving into the new year, there's plans for lots of different kinds of programming. And one change here that I want to make sure that my fellow council members are aware of and that the public is aware of as well, and that is to move to a fine-free library system. So I just want to talk a little bit about that, if it's okay. This is going fine-free is recommended by the American Library Association. We know from other communities across Connecticut and the country that going fine-free helps erase barriers to library use that disproportionately impact low-income households. This is because when patrons begin accumulating fines and fees, they become less inclined to visit the library and utilize the services. And we know that we're providing a significant social benefit to all patrons and particularly low-income patrons, including internet access, computer use, et cetera, and allowing them access to a wide variety of materials and services without having to spend additional funds. So overall, fine-free initiatives do encourage library use, and they reduce penalties for overdue items. About 110 Connecticut libraries have already done this, and so I'm excited that we are going to be able to join in with all of those and for a very, very small fiscal impact. We're also going to be funding a community and outreach librarian to coordinate public programs in our town. Elsewhere in the budget, as previously mentioned, you will see the enhanced commitment to Interval House, providing critical services to people experiencing domestic violence. So I want to thank the staff and leadership in both Leisure and Social Services and the library, especially Helen Rubino Turco, Liz Bosinski, and Laura Ermshire, for all of the great work that they're doing in helping to make West Hartford an enriching, fun place to live and visit. And I also want to shout out to the residents who volunteer their time on advisory boards and commissions in these areas. Your input is extremely valuable. And of course, I want to add my thanks to Town Manager Rick Ledwith, Peter Privatera, and the rest of the finance staff, as well as my colleagues around the table. This is my first town budget, and I came in with a ton of questions, and all of you were very patient and helpful in helping to explain this so that I could understand it. And it's an honor to represent our town and to work in collaboration with all of you who are so experienced, talented, and dedicated. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Pullen. Mr. Cortez.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This is my least favorite time of the year, you know, doing it second time around. First, last year, I was frustrated during this process, just trying to, you know, you get involved, you know, and you put the residents in town first, and you want to put, you know, you want to budget, move forward a budget that, you know, doesn't hurt the resident. And it is hard, you know, when you typically when there's discussion is always, well, what are you going to cut? You know, last year's we had, you know, a lot of good recommendations that came about. You know, we funded the assistant to the Assistant Director to Helen last year through ARPA funds. We got her early instead of waiting, you know, because there's a need. But it was a bit easier because there was money there, you know, money on the table. And we took advantage of that and wouldn't leave anything on the table. This year, it's harder because there's that money's not there. Last year, we had a significant tax increase to due to valuation, right? So we did a revow last year. When you look at who got impacted, these are the people paycheck to paycheck people, you know, the people in the Elmwood community. We gave them, you know, it's like a 20% increase in the values of their home, you know, so that's a huge increase on taxes. But, you know, we phased it in for them, right? We like you only pay 75%, you know. We have discussions about where the other 25% goes, right? Guess what? Surprise, in the spring, you get a letter in the mail saying, hey, last year, we gave you a break. But this year, we got to make we had to be made whole to move forward, right? So we just hit everybody with that surprise now, right? I got phone calls about that. I got phone calls about people because their mortgages have gone up. I love West Hartford. I'm in West Hartford because of all these great things, right? But my issue, you know, when I look at when I ran for town council, one of the things I ran on is, you know, right-sized government. And right away, everybody's like, oh, you know, what are we cutting? You know, no, it's right-sized government. How do you run an efficient government? And that's not necessarily cuts, you know. Sometimes you have to add. You know, we have certain departments that bring in revenue, but yet, you know, we're waiting on permits. We have a backlog on getting permits approved, right? If we right-size that department, there wouldn't be a backlog, right? But then you have other departments which, you know, if we right-size, might have too many people, you know, or there's too much, you know, you know, too many people up top, you know, can we go leaner on certain areas? You know, there's a couple of departments where we have directors that look like they do the same thing on both sides, you know. So how do we right-size that? You know, it's the same job, and and it's a lot. It's a lot, and it's a lot for me to try to to follow. So bear with me because, you know, it's I thought it would be easier this year, and it definitely is not easier. So now, you know, everybody get the letter in the spring, you know, we're going to be made whole, you know. So now is it the time to do another revow, right? Well, values of homes are going up, right? Affordable housing is important for me, and we focus a lot on affordable housing this year. There's a lot of development and a lot of affordable housing piece, right? But the middle class, you know, we have a duty for the middle class. How do we make West Hartford affordable for them? We're pushing them out, you know. Now they're paycheck to paycheck, and now they have to decide, do I sell my home and where do I go to? Because, you know, there's a there's a housing crisis and not just West Hartford, but surrounding, you know. So if they sell their homes, you know, the rent is insane, you know. But but it's hard, you know, how much longer can I hang in there, right? So, all right, so we go up 25, you know, I paid a 25% that you took away last year. But this year, we're going to ask just for a little bit more. Just bear with us. We're going to ask for a little bit more, and we're going to only increase the taxes by 1.86%. That's it. Just hang in. I know you couldn't, you were paycheck to paycheck last year, but this year, you know, you're just going to have to rob Peter to pay Paul, you know. And there's a lot of that going on, you know, not, you know, so what do we do for them? You know, there's members on this council, they're sitting on this council now, that pushed budgets in previous year where they were flat, where there was no increases, right? So but based on the numbers and based on, you know, what do we cut mentality, we're going to be here next year looking at another 1-point something percent and saying it's only 1-point something. And and I get it, but, you know, we have to be missing something. We can't keep this trend up. We're pushing a lot of families out of our communities that, you know, benefit from these great services, family-like minds, you know. My kids go to the public schools here, you know, that's why I'm here. Our public safety, you know, I am proud to to sit on the Public Safety Committee, you know. I always say it, I always joke around, it's like Beverly Hills Cops, too, you know, when they when they push the call box, it's like, you know, how can I help you? It's customer service, you know, when you look at our public safety, you know, it should be a model across the country. That's why I'm here, and I understand there's a cost. But to sit there and say, well, what are you going to cut? You know, I think it's just right sizing, and what does that look like? And I think that's, you know, that's what, you know, next year, maybe look at what can, you know, maybe instead of doing things the same way, is there something we can do different? You know, is there other things we can blend together? But still invest in certain communities that bring revenue, that bring mental health, you know, help of people's mental health, especially with this pandemic. I, again, this budget is harder for me than this year than it was last year. And when you look at the 1.87, yes, there's a lot of good things. I see it. But it is hard to ask that paycheck to paycheck person, give me just a little bit more. So so again, it's hard for me to support this budget. There is a lot of good work. I want to thank everybody that that, you know, took the time. I, you know, sat through everything, and it's like, I want, I want it all, right? But we shouldn't be reducing music, you know, program in one school, which, when you look at the scores of our schools, right, it's, you know, where they're at, their scores are in the lower end. So there's a need there. But it's okay. They don't need that extra hour of music there. We're going to send it somewhere else, you know. So it's and that's what I struggle with. When are we going to, you know, think about those families? And I know we do, and I shouldn't say that we're not, you know, because everybody here cares. I don't think anybody here is doing stuff to be malice, but it, but I think, you know, trying to figure out how to give them a break after the pounding that they got last year, it is hard to support that 1.81 for me. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr.
Thank you for bearing with me.
Thank you for Mr. Cortez. Ms. Blanks.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Budget season is always a challenge for, I think, all of us. And it's always your gearing up, and I always like to associate it with March Madness, because that's sort of how it feels when we get these big binders early part of March, and we need to go through them and mark them up with either our yellow markers or our stickies or what have you. So we're here, and the time has come to adopt the proposed budget for 2024. But I first want to thank Mayor Cantor, Deputy Mayor Sweeney, Minority Leader Mary Fay, Counselor Mary Fay, for collaboration as we navigated through the past month and a half, as well as my council colleagues. Mr. Ledwith, our town manager, you led our town directors, our chiefs, our assistant chiefs, and staff in providing department reports and our proposed budgets. Thank you for your hard work and your energy for putting these documents together where this council can make an informed decision, a decision that will impact our town going forward. Because I know that is rough and tough and stressful on staff when they've got to get all these documents together, they've got to make changes when we request changes, and it's a lot of work. And I just want to acknowledge and thank everybody for all of your efforts. So here in West Hartford, we continue to be a magnet for many families, businesses, students, couples, and single people who desire a suburban community with a metropolitan flair in New England. We continue to be rated by The Money Magazine, livability.com, and number one on each is Best Place to Live. And I speak for myself, but I'm pretty sure everybody else, when you see that, it sort of makes you feel good. You sort of like puff up your sleeve and what have you. Friends and family even say, wow, West Hartford made number one again, or you're in Money Magazine again. And that's prideful for many of us, and I know it is for me. So in this budget, I feel that it's reasonable. The increase reflects a lot of our personnel contracts. We're adding a few positions in our that are essential, especially in public safety. Deputy Mayor Sweeney talked about our two positions in PD and our one position in fire, which are essential. And the equipment that is needed is also essential to perform effectively, and it's critical for service delivery. When we, as a council and town staff, together make sound decisions, we not only impact the future, but we improve and we enhance the town for many years to come. I'm sure many of you who are either sitting in the audience or listening at home or around the table remember what West Hartford looked like many, many years ago. And I've got to say, when I look at West Hartford now, I just smile brightly because we really have come a long way in a positive way. So I believe we must continue to move forward, and we must also focus on being inclusive. And I really want to pause here so we all can reflect and check ourselves and ask the question, how are we being inclusive in our town where we reflect true diversity in all areas of our town and underscore equity? To accomplish many of these things, we must provide adequate resources to fund personnel, equipment, training, and outreach efforts that reflect who we are as an inviting town. And I just want to pivot right now and speak to my public safety heroes and sheros and leaders who do the heavy lifting in our town each and every single day. I'm really humbled and honored to chair public safety. In the beginning, I was like, wow, I'm going to be chairing the police and fire? That's huge. But I've had the honor and the privilege to witness these women and men receive awards and be recognized for life-saving and heroic efforts. Our first responders, they remain ready to respond using advanced life support to save residents' lives. And another responder is ready to jump into action using preventative efforts for residents experiencing mental health challenges and choosing to end their life by attempting to jump over a highway overpass. Think about that for a second. That person has to be in a lot of pain to think of doing something like that. And how that I'm retired, I walk over that overpass plenty of times. But our police officers and our firefighters, they rise to the occasion every shift by preventing or battling these tragedies, saving lives, and sparing families the unexpected grief of burying and mourning a loss of a loved one. So I personally want to thank each and every staff member of the Police Department and the Fire Department, because I know you all don't receive enough thanks for what you do. Thank you for your service, because while we all sleep in our homes, you all are working to ensure we can sleep peacefully and feel safe in our homes, place of businesses, and school district. Before I talk about how we grow and improve as a town, I just want to recognize many of the accomplishments that the PD and fire provided for our this 2023 fiscal year. I couldn't name everything, but I think it's important because unlike many of our other departments, they really do the heavy lifting. So first, Chief Riddick, AC Tiara, AC Ricabon. So first, Chief Riddick, A.C. Tiara, A.C. Rickabon, and the entire staff, the entire men and women in blue, and I see a couple of you sitting back there, so again, thank you. Your primary focus is to reduce crime and enhance the public confidence in the department. And I would say you've accomplished that. The drone program was, was expanded to include supporting large-scale town events, serious accident scenes, and crime scene investigation applications. And I've witnessed some of that as well at some of our larger events. With the statewide increase in car thefts and car break-ins, the department joined a regional violent crime auto theft task force, which proved to be very successful in criminal arrests and stolen recovery in West Hartford and surrounding towns, which I believe send messages to violent offenders. Significant efforts were also made in 2023 in developing protocols to comply with the House Bill 6004, Public Act Number 20 hyphen 1, for the PD to implement the new body worn and vehicle dash camera systems. Our citizen police review board provided a full year of review and oversight of the PD internal investigations. And then our townwide traffic camera program was implemented. And this initiative resulted in about 13 license plates reader cameras in highly traveled locations in town. And I'm seeing you all out and about, so you're very visible in addressing many of these concerns that has been received by our residents and businesses. On the fireside, again, kudos to Chief Priest, A.C. O'Callahan, Fire Marshal Grimaldi, and Emergency Management Bob McHugh, as well as the Battalion Chiefs and our Deputy Fire Marshal. You've responded to over 9,000, 9,000 emergency incidents. You've completed multiple trainings throughout town with multiple departments, especially that active shooter hostile events drill. And before I joined the council, I was able to observe an active shooter drill in a different location, and I won't disclose where that is, or was. Also worked on removing barriers for applicants to recruit a diverse pool to reach full staffing, which is very much appreciative because, again, you are appealing to populations or a group of people who wouldn't necessarily consider joining the ranks in fire, for whatever reason. But I'm happy to see that the FD is putting themselves out there and really working outside of the box to recruit these individuals. You've expanded the training for hands-only CPR and Stop the Bleed community members through these pop-up events. And again, how important is that after we all witnessed on live television where an NFL player went into this emergency situation, and we saw how quickly the first responders got to the field and saved his life? And now he has his story to tell. And the other piece that I love about FD is they're coordinating with the West Hartford Public Schools to work to secure preparedness capstone project on the CERT training curriculum. So again, we are forward-thinking and planning for the future. So we're not waiting for something to happen, we're preparing, so we stay ready. So I applaud the PD as well as the FD for these efforts. So I just want to continue by saying, as we continue to look to grow West Hartford with many of the projects that were, that are coming on, especially One Park, Farmington Avenue, Trout Brook, LaSalle Road, the Yukon property, and the Trout Brook Trail, our town population is gonna increase. And we should welcome this new excitement and energy. But because, because it means an increase in revenue, growth in grand lists, foot traffic, and students, more school students. So along with the growth, will be a need for services to manage this growth. We are a town that is proactive, responsive, and we continue to improve and strive for excellence. That is why West Hartford continues to be where many want to live, retire, and have a business. So I urge my colleagues to join me as I support the adoption of this adjusted budget that is now being proposed. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Ms. Blanks. Mr. Zedanowitz.
Thank you. That's hard to follow, Ms. Blanks. That's a tough one. And I, I think I, I think I could say this, that, I think if we had the President of the United States visiting West Hartford, and there was an incident, and both Ms. Blanks and the President went down, I think the fire and police would go to Ms. Blanks first. They just love her, they adore her. And I adjust, I hope nothing like that happens. But I, I've just, I've been around enough where the fire and police and the tours and stuff, and even at Rockledge, it's just, they, they do appreciate your leadership on that. And I, I think I'd be remiss if I didn't mention it, because you did so eloquently in talking about them, and I couldn't even venture to do what you just did. So I, all the kudos to Ms. Blanks and the firefighters and police. You do a great job leading that committee, so thank you. I digress, sorry, but that was impressive. I'd like to thank the town manager, Rick. You did yeoman's work. You led your directors, chiefs, both fire and police, and your directors and, and everything through this process. This is, I think, my 11th budget that I've been through, through the Board of Ed and now Town Council. And it's never easy, you know? Someone earlier called it March Madness, and it kind of is March Madness. It's a difficult process, but one that, that we take seriously, and everyone at this table takes seriously, and everyone that, that works for Rick takes seriously, and, and looks at all the dotted i's and crossed t's. So I want to thank you. There's a lot of things that I do like about this budget. I do, a lot of things I like about it, you know? Sometimes, as a fiscal conservative, it's all about cuts and, and things like that. And it's not always about the cuts, the ads, you know? I originally, I think I'm the only one at this table that, that formally asked for a, originally I asked for a 1.5% cut. And I sat down with our town manager, and, you know, I, I succumbed, and I says, well, okay, let's, let's just do a 1% cut. And what came back to me was, well, we're a people person, we're a people organization. And the original cut was, we were gonna get rid of teachers and firefighters and police. And that's exactly what I don't want to do. You know, the, the original number came 20.5 teachers. And, and I just couldn't fathom that. I've been on the Board of Ed for many years, and that just doesn't make sense to me. You know, if we all look at our homes, and we take our own budgets, and if you had to cut your expenses by 1%, you know, what would you do? Maybe not go out to dinner as much, maybe hold back on a vacation or something? There's things like that you do, right? Town budget's a little more difficult, because we're in the people organization. But I thought 1% was reasonable and to look at. I think maybe going forward, maybe as a group here, we could look at something like that? Is it just cross the t's and dot the i's a little, little harder, maybe? I, I don't know how we get there. But I'd like to see, I'd like to see a little bit, right? And we couldn't get there. And I didn't want to see any teachers get cut, and I didn't want to see any firefighters or police get cut, and I kind of withdrew that, because that was what was being suggested. And I just couldn't fathom that. So it, it's not something that I, I can go forward with, because, you know, safety at the end of the day is what we're, is one of the most precious items we have as families and members of this, of this town. So I think it's important. We had a great process through the budget process, as, you know, we talked about it through committees, and we broke it down as committees, and it made a lot of sense going that way. So I appreciate all the committee chairs that did their yeoman's work on, on everything. It was a great process, and I, and, and I think everyone out there should appreciate that a lot of hard work went on beyond, behind, oh, it was all public too. But there's a lot of people doing a lot of work at home individually on, on these binders. And a lot of it was publicly announced, or through the, through the meetings here, or if it was on Zoom. So it was a great process. As a fiscal conservative, I say this often, I've said this, I think, a lot of budgets that, you know, if you have $10,000, what's 1% of $10,000? Yeah, it's not, it's not a big number. But what's 1% of $330 million? Well, that number gets a little bigger and harder to manage. It's still 1%, but it's a different number. You know, what's, what's 1% of $250 million versus $330 million? So we have to think about that going forward, because if we're gonna continuously increase by 1 and 2 and 3 and 4%, those numbers escalate very quickly. And we have to manage that. And I'm glad to see, though, and I talked about this a little bit last year, that we're getting some interest income. We hadn't seen that in the past, and I'm glad that we're seeing, they're expecting 4.75 to 4.9% interest. We haven't seen that in the past, and a question I asked last year is, why, why aren't we? Well, it just wasn't there last year, and we were a little conservative. I guess the numbers just weren't there. And, and that's really a, a place that we can grow, is our interest income. And I'm glad to see that now the 4.9% potential interest growth. Okay, so if that was 5.9%, then could we look at a 1% cut? So that, that means a lot. So, and what does it do? It goes into the bottom line of all of our residents here in West Hartford. And I think that's important. You know, I, as a fiscal conservative, I've often added to budgets, because I think they needed it. And I'm not opposed to that, and I'm not here to, you know, bang my fist on the ground and say, we gotta cut, cut, cut. That's not, that's not what I, I'd like to do. It's, it's a matter of just being cognizant of the fact that at some point, we have to meet that road and be able to offer a sustainable increase, or a sustainable budget going forward, I should say, not such an increase. But so that it's not necessarily always an increase, always an increase, always an increase. We, how do we get there? By the hard work at this table, by the directors, by the chiefs, by our town manager. And, and they do that now, and I'm not saying they don't. They do, they do, they, they, they are very responsible on this budget. But again, when you add 1 and 3% every year on $330 million, that's a bigger number than if it was $10,000 or $300 million, you know? So we have to watch that, and that's what I'm concerned about, is the, the growth of our, of our overall budget going forward, and those small increases are gonna get bigger. So a half percent 10 years from now would look like a 3% increase now. And we've got to watch that. So these are the things I'm concerned about, but I do appreciate all the hard work, and I do acknowledge that, and I thank everyone for that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Zedanowitz. Mr. Wenigret.
Thank you very much, Madam Mayor. I was wearing a mask today, because I've got a bit of a cough, but I did test today, so I will relax it for the speech and put it back on. Just when you cough nowadays, you really want to have that mask on. But these two can move a little farther apart if they're for it. I won't be offended. So thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you to Rick Ledwith and Peter Privatera, and for my committee, to our Public Works Facilities and Sustainability Team of John Phillips, Robert Palmer, and Catherine Deviney, and to the rest of our excellent staff of public servants who show their passion and dedication to our town every single day. I'm truly honored to work with you all, and I know that residents of West Hartford are lucky to have this team fighting for them. Again, focusing on Public Works in the past year, and just hitting just a few highlights, Public Works completed 9,712 work orders, which I will now list. An increase of 14% over the previous year. They implemented and bid out a food scrap pilot program, which is now being enjoyed by two of our members on, on this council, so we're all looking forward to hearing reports. Hope it goes well, but we're gonna be bugging them to see what their trash looks like. And obviously, the pilot to see whether or not a town-wide effort will be workable, and hopefully it will be. Through the Parking Services Division of Public Works, continue to support the outdoor dining and just a host of, of other activities. I don't need to list them all, we all know. Every time there's an event, streets are closed, and everybody comes out. And even though we've reopened LaSalle Road, we'll shut it off at times, I hope. And, and again, for even more work for that, for that fund. They do a great job making West Hartford the place it is. This year, Public Works is gonna begin construction on a new material services center to better serve the public, improve efficiency, and support waste reduction and separation activities. And will work to develop and design the electric vehicle services equipment for town implementation. Now, in terms of the details of the budget, and I'm gonna get a little wonky on this, not for length, but I want to demonstrate a few sort of specific things going on. The budget drivers this year, so why did Public Works go up around 5%? Primarily due to fully funding previously approved positions that we all knew were needed, and we put them in last year, but they weren't fully funded. So now they are. We've added a street maintainer and a grounds maintainer. We invest a lot in our streets and our fields, and proper upkeep is essential. You know, we don't want to put a whole lot of money and capital resources into a field and then have it be useless a few years later, because we haven't maintained it properly. It's essential that, that that is done, and these modest increases, I believe, are fully justified. I'll get back to this a little bit, but Facilities is gonna continue its efforts to make the town as energy efficient as possible, while maintaining the beauty and efficiency of our buildings. In particular, I'd like to advertise this year our energy procurement strategy. It's a lengthy discourse in our budget book, but it has helped us lock in favorable prices, affrenage, and continues to expand our solar programs. It's really impressive, the work being done there. And it's, behind the scenes, we don't see it, but it helps keep our costs down. Talk about right sizing, that's a right sizing effort. That's work that's being done that really is having a direct impact on our budget. And throughout the work of both departments, and I said this last year, sustainability is incorporated into all our decisions. We continue to achieve 100% offset of electricity with green energy, green E renewable energy credits, and while we've already received silver level certification, and noted this year as being in the top five in the state, next is we're going for the gold. Which doesn't exist yet, but when it does, we're gonna go for it. Now, I want to talk a little bit about the budget in general, and respond to Mark's comments. And let me start off by saying, I appreciate the fact that you've, you've sort of pulled back, you didn't put a proposal in here for a 1% cut. And I understand, you know, the frustration and the, you know, the, the good merit, the good desire behind it. We all want to do the affordability, as Alberto said, you know? We're all concerned about our residents and the tax increases. But part of the problem, and again, as we go through this book, I think we all come to realize what is within our control and what isn't. Let me start off by saying, I am not a fiscal conservative, but I am frugal, as my family will certainly ascertain. Yeah, I'm cheap. Yeah, I'm cheap. And I don't want to see spending, I don't care what we're spending, I want to know that it's being done properly. This past year, you know, we're adding some positions. Again, we have some drivers. We're adding a couple positions in my departments, we're adding to police, fire inspector, librarian. I wanted proof of all that stuff. I didn't, I don't think any of us, we're not rubber stamping requests from our departments. We want to see, is it needed? Why are you asking for these increases? And I think that's our role. The one thing we can't do though, is try to pick a number and tell our staff, listen, just cut 1%. I don't think it works. Our role on council, not to be the expert on budgeting or management of the town, we hire the best people we can to do that for us. But our job is to set policy and there is no more direct or important way to do that than to help craft a reasonable and progressive budget that does the goals that we want to achieve for our town. We can't just leave it to unelected officials though. It's unrealistic and advocates our responsibility to set policy. Do we need more police? That's a decision we have to make. Should we add resources, resources to speed up approval of building permits? Again, exactly the point, maybe we need to add to that department in order to get the revenue and get people, the grand list built up quicker, right? Start taxing that extra stuff, right? And we're doing that. We're adding to that department to make that go faster. But should our libraries stay open at the hours they have? You know, we all sat around and declared climate change a crisis. So the question for us is, not for staff, but for us, is are we going to fund the initiatives to address that crisis? That's up to us. So, you know, when we talk about how did we get to this number, from my point of view, we got to this number that we're coming to because we all looked and studied it really hard and looked to see, is it justified? Is this a necessary expense? Now, the other thing that with numbers and it's hard for anybody until you really look into the details of this to really grasp, is a lot of this budget, we all know it's a lot, it's people, but it's also a lot of it is not under our direct control. So again, to get a little bit into the weeds and I apologize for those following at home, this won't be necessarily easy, but our budget is again, 330 million. Of that, 190 million goes to the schools, 140 is this building's budget. Of that 140 though, about $43 million of that is fixed. It's the pension obligation bonds, which thank God are now under control, but they're still a payment. The MDC costs, we can't, we're trying, but we can't tell them to cut their rate. We have a school transportation fund for private schools that we obligated to do. We have the health district and then we have capital financing and paying back our old bills. That is up to over $40 million. So if we were to initiate a 1% cut, we're really talking about about 1.4% for the budget of the ones we control. Now, to make that even worse for my department and Public Works, of the 13 and a half million dollar budget of Public Works, $5.5 million of it is getting rid of our trash. It's going to pains for picking up the trash at the doorstop and it's going to pay to get rid of the stuff. Now, we're going to work really hard to try to reduce that number and that's what we're all doing and, you know, these two are going to figure that out. And we're kind of, you know, they're going to knock that down a little bit, but for right now, you know, we're spending, so that budget of Public Works, it's a 13 and a half million dollar budget, but only $8 million of it is under our real control. And so if we cut 1.4% from that budget, we're talking about almost a 2.5% decrease in, in what Public Works has to work with. And that would not be invisible, right? If you cut 2.5% from that department, we're going to get a whole lot of calls. We're going to have streets that, I know people complain, but you ain't seen nothing yet, there's going to be sidewalk streets, fields, you know, we're going to lose our perfect record on snow plowing, right? We're not going to get it all done. Can't run that department in a growing town with that kind of money. So, so again, I think that overall, we've all worked and I appreciate, you know, so the work of this entire team, we've worked to make this as good a budget as possible, but there's no freebies. Either freebies in terms of department heads, they don't get anything into this budget that we don't approve and support. And from our point of view, we can't cut anything without taking responsibility for those cuts and what the outcome would be if we do cut programs. So again, just to conclude, I'd like to thank our staff for all the work on this budget, our mayor for her absolutely tireless efforts, dedication and leadership, and to the rest of my council colleagues for their commitment to our community. Thank you very much. And again, if I didn't make it obvious, I do think this budget should pass. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Winogre. Ms. McGinnis.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And I knew I was nervous, but my watch just gave me a high heart rate alert. So apparently I'm more nervous than I thought. I'd like to first suggest that maybe Liam and I start a council members Tiffany and Liam's composting Facebook page where we can keep the community updated on our composting. So as most of you know, my first night on the council was when I received this very large notebook. And I would be lying if I said that it wasn't overwhelming. As a matter of fact, I refused to open it for two days because it was so big. So I really, really appreciate the way that we handled the budget and going through committee, you know, piece by piece, because it allowed me to break it into pieces and look at it that way instead of looking at it as a whole. There are a lot of people from the community planning and economic development world that did a lot of work on this budget and I want to point them out because it's obvious there was a lot of work that I want to hear. Our town manager, Mr. Ledwith, Peter Privatera and his staff, Dwayne Martin and his staff, Todd Dumay and his staff, Greg Summer, Tim McLucci, I hope I pronounced that right, Kristin Gorski and her staff and all the other council members who I went to for questions and why are we doing this? Why do we do it this way? I'm going to go through the list of accomplishments and the things that have happened in this committee. It's very long and I can't go through all of them and I'm not going to because you're all waiting for the mayor. But I would be remiss if before I spoke about those, I did not mention that it was our town clerk, Mr. Davidoff, who chaired this committee through all of this. So I know I have big chews to fill and he called me on Sunday and said, have you written your remarks yet for the budget? And I said, no, I like to do it last minute. And he goes, okay. So just a few things and this is, might seem like a long list, but it's actually not. The North Main Street Road Diet was finalized. The town's transit oriented development zoning district, which encourages development within walking distance of the CT Fast Track stations, was established. Collaborated with our state delegation to secure funding for Troutbrook Trail, Park Road Rehabilitation Project, Project and construction of tennis courts at Conner and Hall High School. The Building Inspection Division successfully managed a significant increase of planned reviews and inspections associated with large construction sites at One Park Road and 540 New Park Avenue. Collaborated with staff, restaurateurs and other stakeholders to give West Hartford the premier outdoor dining experience in Connecticut. We established a Vision Zero Task Force to support the recently approved Vision Zero Initiative and I know this is Mr. Davidoff's pride and joy, approved the fellowship housing redevelopment project, which will modify, or modernize the living conditions for those who call it home. We hired an economic development specialist to increase the town's capacities to support business and nonprofit community, attracted and facilitated significant commercial and multifamily investment, including over 700 units of market rate and affordable housing throughout the town. And, you know, affordable housing is a game changer and I'm very happy that, you know, we're making great strides in that. Oversaw the creation and ongoing management of several ARPA programs and projects, including the Small Business and Nonprofit Recovery Grant, Affordable Housing Development Program and Wayfinding Signage Initiative. The future goals are to complete, and this is just a few of them, there are a lot, complete a public roadway safety study and assist Vision Zero Task Force to improve traffic safety for all users, complete the section of Troutbrook Trail from Duffield Drive to Fern Street. And we also have a new building inspector that will be starting in early May, which should help us catch up on some of that work. So these accomplishments, along with many others, are why our town is a place where businesses want to locate and grow. And as my first budget, I know there's a lot of responsibility to this and I don't take it lightly at all. I'm proud of this budget and I'm truly excited for the future of West Hartford. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Wow, I just, I, I'm in awe of all of the, all of you. Everybody has such meaningful, important thoughts to share, but I, I am going to give a shout out to the chairs of the, of the committees that have worked so hard on each particular budget and really gotten to, really dug in to, to all of their work. I, I can't tell you how astute and committed each one of them are, but I am, I am really beyond with Ms. McGinnis and Ms. Pullen with the questions that they asked on their first budget, really amazing. You were just, your ability to, to understand and to, and, and not be afraid to ask questions and challenge. So thank you for adding so much to this budget process, being, this being your first, first budget. Really remarkable. I'm going to step back for a minute and just do thank yous to Jennifer Evans, without WHCI, our community would not be informed and I am so grateful for the tireless work that she provides and the value she provides our community. And Ronnie Newton, who doesn't miss a meeting, if you don't see her, she's watching somewhere else. Our community is so engaged and informed because of the work, the tireless work that Ronnie puts in to, again, inform our community on, on facts and I am so grateful. We are very, very, I don't like to use the word lucky because again, we create our luck, but we are blessed to have Ronnie doing that tireless work. We have incredible town management and again, this doesn't happen, we invest in, in, in the town management and the professionalism that our residents hold, hold us to, all of us to, that tremendous standard. We are led by Rick Ledwith, this is your second budget. And, and you know, Rick, when he enrolled the budget, and I have some of his actually language in here because he told the story very well. No budget is an isolation. It is always a, a story of the past and what you're doing and where you're going. I'm not going to tell you who I bumped into on, on Saturday night, but there was an elected leader of an, of a town that had said that they didn't have a, a tax increase for the past six years, I think it was, or eight years. And she said, but we have not done anything and no capital improvements to our community. So they have to scramble now to figure out how to do the tremendous amount of deferred maintenance, road fixes that they need to do, you know, buildings, so a bit of, of an understanding of how important it is to continue those investments. We know that personally by, very well firsthand by our pensions and what happened with our pensions when there was not that intention and that commitment to fund the pensions every year. We know it on the state level, we know it on the town level. And I'm, I'm really grateful for the work that we did in the past to solidify and stabilize those costs and it was a tremendous amount of strategic thought and work that went into that. So thank you to Rick. Thank you to every department head that has contributed in tremendous ways to planning and none of them got what they wanted. I just want to make that clear. When they came to our town manager and he said, yeah, thanks, nope. And then, you know, and so there is so much work before it gets to us and then it goes back to them for even more, more work because challenges always pop up. But between our, well, I'm just going to list our executive director of Equity Advancement, Rosina Haskins, Facilities, Robert Palmer and their staffs and all of their staffs. Public Works, John Phillips, Police Department, Police Chief Vernon Riddick, Fire Chief, Chief Priest, Leisure Services and Social Services, Helen Rabino Turco, who is in the audience here. Our Community Services Director, Dwayne Martin, our library, our Director of Library Services, Laura Immersher, Armsher, sorry, our IT Director, Jared Moran, Human Resources, Kathy Lombardi, our Assessor, Joe, Joe Dakers. Town planners kind of a little bit off to the side and over, so I mean, I'm going to give a shout out to Todd Dumay because there's been such tremendous work and economic development as well, Kristin Gorski, our town clerk, Leanne Davidoff now, and very importantly, a partner in everything that we do as superintendent, superintendent of schools. And we're so grateful to have Paul Vasinas in the audience and congratulations to you because it is the, the foundation of our town is people investing in the homes that they buy because their kids can go to schools that are stellar. So thank you for, for all of that. Did I forget anybody on directors? Okay, thank you. The hardest thing. So I appreciate Tiffany's like, help, alerts, alerts. But our, well, except I didn't say to the, to the staff that is here right now and the, and the finance staff that, that really makes this all work and the tremendous integrity and professionalism that they create when they create these documents for us, but and the way they run the town day-to-day financially. Peter Privatera, Chief Financial Officer, thank you to you and all of your staff, but I'm going to give a special shout out to Lisa Newton, Financial Operations Officer, who is here, and Patty Lewis, Budget and Grants Manager, who is also here. Thank you to, again, the tremendous work that you do and so much goes behind the scenes and seems seamless, but we know the tremendous lift that you, that you do every day. But again, thank you to the whole department. Budgets are, as my colleagues have said, a reflection of our values and priorities. And although this is going a one-year look forward, in some ways, we, we do capital for a long term, it builds on commitments, investments and initiatives of prior years and strengthens our community for today, tomorrow and the future. We could take a lot of shortcuts. We could get to a zero increase, no question, but what will we do for our community for the next year and the year after that? So we have CPI inflation at 4.3% and that is driving, as it is our own, my own utility bill that I opened today, that drives our utility bills in town, it drives everything that we do, the gas that we fill our police cars and fire, and fire trucks with. It, it, it is really built into everything we do. So we try to do a budget that is, meets the needs of the community, protects, protects, meets our obligations, our commitments, but also invest in the tomorrow that we, we want to make sure that we can keep doing. So what our, the town manager had talked about, and I think it's important to think, for us to think about, the response to the pandemic. We could not have responded to the pandemic if we hadn't invested in our public safety in the way we did, in our public works the way we did, in our, our, our facilities, the remarkable work that they did to keep our buildings clean and bring our, and as many people back on board as quickly as we could. We could have made shortcuts and we could have taken some, you know, not funded certain things, but it would not have allowed us to, to respond to the pandemic in the way we did. And it surely wouldn't have allowed us to recover the year after in the way we, that we recovered. And then the resiliency that we built through last year, building back our community and now we have now we have, we are in, and I'm going to, I'm sorry, steal your momentum, but we are in a building and a momentum in our, in our community. It's what, what Counselor Blanks said about being inclusive, it's, it's what Ms. McGinnis said about the tremendous amount of economic development and growth that we had, have. It's what all my colleagues have said about their, the work that they've done in the departments and what my colleagues have recognized. We know it, and we understand that we couldn't, we can't respond, we can't do our jobs without the right resources, the right people, and, and the, and the right tools. So, I have often said, I'm a runner, sometimes less fast than others, but if you stand still, you will lose the race. We are recognized, we are currently recognized, and we have been recognized for a while now, locally and nationally, for a highly desirable place to live, work, and play. We are a destination, and we are very proud of our vibrant, welcoming, and thriving community. But again, luck, this isn't luck. We need to create the luck that we, that we are experiencing, that's taking measures to ensure that we will succeed. We are, and that's what we need to do. So, it takes the investment of our whole community, and as, and I, none of, any time that we impact our taxes really does make a difference, but I also think about the investment that the people are making, often their largest investment in their homes. Is their value going down, or is it going up based on the decisions that we make? If we let, we don't invest in our schools, we don't invest in our public safety, those home values will go down. And honestly, that impact will impact our, the tax bills as well, because the grant list won't remain as high as it is. So all of those things are balances and really important for us to think about when we're making these investments in our community. So, as we, as was mentioned, I think Ms. Blanks mentioned, some of the accolades for Money Magazine, Zippia, Liveability, Niche, all of those things are making our houses, you know, top, so desirable, and, and personally, I've watched it with many people that have been trying to get into town, and they, and they are having a harder time getting a house. So, we are seeing momentum, we're seeing record investments throughout our community, and we're seeing progress in initiatives, initiatives, and transformational projects that we have been working on for years, whether it's ADUs, and Ms. Fay mentioned, you know, to keep seniors affordable and give them the options to age in place, to affordable housing, to market-rate housing in and around our commercial centers, so people can walk and, and, and buy groceries and have a cup of coffee and share a meal, to our TOD ordinance, and we just saw an article in the Hartford Business Journal about the, the attraction, on being able to build that without maybe necessarily all the, the same hurdles and costs, that, to the improvements, as Ms. McGinnis mentioned, on, on New Park and our Trailbrook Trail. We are, we, we need to fill the housing shortage. I think Ms. Fay mentioned the fact about overdevelopment, and, and one of the, one of the things that is really messaging that we've heard over and over again is we have a housing shortage in our country, we have one in our state, and we do have one in our town. And one of the, and, and the workforce, the shortage of workforce is, is critical for businesses to succeed to, to actually change that curve. And one of the commitments that I think that every community should be making is, how do we allow people that actually work in our town, live in our town, or to be able to have young professionals that are graduating from all of our wonderful state universities and the many universities around us, have a place to live? And having a variety of affordability is, is really important. But also, you know, somebody said, oh, you know, the market-rate housing or luxury housing, is that something we should be building? Yes, because people that want to be in town, I was just talking to a wonderful doctor who was honored at the Hartford Hospital event, and he moved to Bloomfield because he couldn't find an option in Gillette Ridge, couldn't find an opportunity to buy something in West Hartford that was going to allow him to live in a luxury condo, and it's good that his house turned over and, and a young, maybe, you know, a new family is starting in that wonderful home. But it's, it's sad that he had to leave town to buy something because he couldn't find what he was looking for in our own community. But, but anyway, that, that is a really important part of our economic ecosystem, I would say, to, to, to everything. But it also, reality is, our, way Connecticut is structured, is our property taxes pay for 90% of our budget, 89, to be exact, 89% of our budget. So, if we don't grow our grant list, we can't meet those increasing costs, and that is the reality. We have to make the right decisions on the right developments, and we, and staff work so hard, so by the time it gets to us, it usually is the absolute right development. So, again, that's, that's a priority. Some of the other initiatives, investing in our public safety, our, our police officers, our firefighters, to be able to answer to some of this, this, this growth and the, and the high quality and the demands that our community is experiencing, and road safety, Vision Zero, all of those things are really important for our community to remain safe and healthy. As Mr. Sweeney mentioned, we started the year in a really tough place, and we responded to it, and we will continue to respond to it until everybody is a little bit safer. We completed the feasibility study as we, as Ms. Pollan mentioned, on our Community Center, Library, Senior Center, Teen Center. This is going to be a model, I think, for the country. Ms. Helen Rabino Turco has been leading a lot of that, and we're so grateful. I do, when this actually percolates and is a, a real, a real vision, I mean, it is a vision, a real project, it is going to be a model for, for our country. And we are, we're committed to sustainability, as Mr. Winograd talked about. We were one of the five communities in the state to receive Climate Leader designation and Sustainable CT, and we remain one of the 26 communities who are Silver Certified. And again, when there's gold, we'll go after it. But this budget builds on our community's strengths and optimism. It is balanced with the uncertainty of surrounding global inflationary pressures and rising interest rates. There are challenges ahead. We know some of them, we don't know some of them, but we, with this budget, will be ready to respond. Our exceptional fiscal policies allow us to continue exciting and momentous work of investing throughout our community, from the Trailbrook Trail to, to New Park and New Britton Avenue. This significant economic development will make us stronger for 20 to 30 years. We are, we haven't seen since Blueback, a real major investment, One Park was the first. So this will carry us to the next 20 to 30 late years. It allows us then to continue the investment in our communities, not only our vibrancy and our diversity and our, the economic, the economic security that it creates for our businesses up and down all of our, our main commercial centers and streets, but it adds to, it will add to our, allow us to keep investing in our town's infrastructure and our key initiatives and improve our quality of life. This is a really strong, but good budget, and I, and I surely will be supporting it. So, with that, Mr. Sweeney.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Madam Mayor, I make a motion to amend the ordinance to increase the education budget by $250,000.
Second. Motion's been made in seconded, we will go to a roll call. Mr. Davidoff.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Counselor Blanks.
Yes.
Merrick Cantor.
Yes.
Counselor Cortez.
No.
Counselor Fay.
Yes.
Counselor McGinnis.
Yes.
Counselor Pollan.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Sweeney.
Yes.
Counselor Winograd.
Yes.
Counselor Zadanowicz.
No.
The amendment carries seven to two.
Thank you, Mr. Davidoff. Mr. Sweeney, B.
Yeah, Madam Mayor, excuse me, we're on the, now we're on the, the overall ordinance. We already called that for, so.
I apologize, yes, you're right.
Just call a roll call on the, on the.
Okay, we will go back, we were to do another roll call with the discussion of the, for the amendment to the ordinance. So that was for the ordinance?
That was on the amendment.
Okay.
You're asking for a roll call on the, on the ordinance as adopted.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just to clarify, the previous motion was to amend the ordinance, and so now the vote, assuming the debate is finished, is on the ordinance as amended by the previous motion.
Thank you. As Corporation Counsel mentioned, this is the amended ordinance. We will go to roll call.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Counselor Blanks.
Yes.
Merrick Cantor.
Yes.
Counselor Cortez.
No.
Counselor Fay.
Yes.
Counselor McGinnis.
Yes.
Counselor Pollan.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Sweeney.
Yes.
Counselor Winograd.
Yes.
Counselor Zadanowicz.
No.
Motion carries seven to two.
Thank you, Mr. Davidoff. Now we'll go to B.
Madam Mayor, I make a motion to adopt the ordinance deauthorizing $3.4, $3.5 million for projected authorized capital improvement program for the fiscal year 2023, and appropriating funds for projects in the capital improvement program for fiscal year 2023 to 2024, appropriating funds for the projects in the capital improvement program in the fiscal year 2024 to 2025, and authorizing the issuance of bonds of the town to finance the appropriations and pending insurance thereafter of making of temporary borrowings of such purpose.
Second.
Motion's been made in seconded. Any discussion on this particular item? We kind of talked about everything in general, and we will go to roll call, Mr. Davidoff.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Counselor Blanks.
Yes.
Merrick Cantor.
Yes.
Counselor Cortez.
Yes.
Counselor Fay.
No.
Counselor McGinnis.
Yes.
Counselor Pollan.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Sweeney.
Yes.
Counselor Winograd.
Yes.
Counselors Zadanowicz.
Yes.
Motion carries eight to one.
Thank you, Mr. Davidoff. C, Mr. Sweeney.
Yes, Madam Mayor, I make a motion to adopt the ordinance concerning the appropriation to and in the capital improvement fund for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2023.
Second.
Motion's been made a seconded. Any discussion on this? Okay, roll call, Mr. Davidoff.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Counselor Blanks.
Yes.
Merrick Cantor.
Yes.
Counselor Cortez.
Yes.
Counselor Fay.
No.
Counselor McGinnis.
Yes.
Counselor Pollan.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Sweeney.
Yes.
Counselor Winograd.
Yes.
Counselors Zadanowicz.
Yes.
Motion carries eight to one.
Thank you, Mr. Davidoff. A D, Mr. Sweeney.
Madam Mayor, I make a motion to adopt the resolution concerning the tax levy on the list of, on the list of October 1, 2022.
Second.
Motion's been made in seconded, so just to confirm, Mr. Ledwith, this is a revised from the last, it's, it is now.
I have to make that motion.
Oh, sorry, okay, sorry. That, we don't, I don't, well, is there any discussion on the, the resolution concerning the tax, that's the old, on October 1, 2022?
Madam Mayor, I will make a motion to amend the resolution to reduce the mill rate to reflect the changes to the budget as described by the town manager from 4.96 to 4.92.
Second.
Okay, now, motion's been made in seconded. Any discussion? We kind of already discussed it. Okay, roll call, yes, roll call, Mr. Davidoff.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This is on the motion to amend the resolution. Counselor Blanks.
Yes.
Merrick Cantor.
Yes.
Counselor Cortez.
Yes.
Counselor Fay.
No.
Counselor McGinnis.
Yes.
Counselor Pollan.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Sweeney.
Yes.
Counselor Winograd.
Yes.
Counselors Zadanowicz.
Yes.
Motion carries on the amendment, eight to one.
Okay. My, okay, now it's, hang on. Okay, Mr. Sweeney.
We.
On the motion to amend the resolution, then.
Adopted and amended.
Roll call for, so I call a roll call for the amendment to the resolution. Mr. Davidoff.
The amended resolution.
Yes, is that not what I said? Okay. This is a roll call vote for the resolution as amended. Thank you.
Madam Mayor, thank you. We're voting on the amended resolution with respect to the tax levy.
Thank you, Mr. Davidoff, yes.
Counsel, Counselor Blanks.
Yes.
Merrick Cantor.
Yes.
Counselor Cortez.
Yes.
Counselor Fay.
No.
Counselor McGinnis.
Yes.
Counselor Pollan.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Sweeney.
Yes.
Counselor Winograd.
Yes.
Counselors Zadanowicz.
Yes.
Motion carries eight to one.
Thank you, Mr. Davidoff. Okay, we go to E, Mr. Sweeney.
Madam Mayor, I make a motion to adopt the resolution appropriating American Rescue Plan Act grant funds.
Second.
Motion's been made a seconded, and Mr. Ledwith, do you want to do just a quick summary of this? This is all in our materials, but.
Yep, absolutely. Thank you, Madam Mayor. So we are, this resolution, so within the capital improvement plan, we did appropriate 2.2, and this year's CIP for fiscal year '24, we did appropriate $2.2 million in ARPA funds for the center infrastructure master plan, so that includes 2.2, the $2.2 million will go towards the restoration of LaSalle Road. This will be, it's more of a housekeeping item right now, because it is in the CIP, but we will be back before our committees, before this project goes to construction, to walk through the various plans that will certainly, counsel have input into what that final plan will look like. And then the other appropriation was for $150,000 for the Vision Zero Task Force. So we have hired a consultant to assist the committee to develop an action plan over the course of the next year, and these funds will be used to support the cost of that consultant. Again, we will be back before various committees to give you updates on the progress of the Vision Zero Task Force.
Thank you, Mr. Ledwith. Is there any discussion?
I just would say, Madam Mayor, we've discussed the ARPA funding along the way, this has been, all of these funds are being used on one-time funding, and what is another added in of this budget is that we, we made sure that ARPA funding was not something we dug a hole in this budget on, on funding positions on, so I urge, urge adoption.
Thank you, Mr. Sweeney, and that's exactly right. All right, anything else? Roll.
He has a question.
Sure, but he's, okay, go ahead, Ms. Fay.
Yeah, Mr. Ledwith, after these expending the ARPA funds, what do we have left for future years?
For you, Madam Mayor, to Minority Leader Fay, I brought it with me, I want to say we have, after the 2.2 million and the $150,000, we will have $12.7 million in ARPA funds available.
And then what's the date that they have to be spent by?
So we have to allocate, appropriate them by the end of fiscal year '24, expend them by fiscal year '26.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Ms. Fay.
Thank you very much.
All right, we can go to roll call, Mr. Davidoff?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Counselor Blanks.
Yes.
Merrick Cantor.
Yes, sorry, that could have been a voice vote. I can, I can just do a voice vote for me. Is that okay? Can I change it?
Hmm.
Okay, go roll call, go ahead.
Counselor Cortez.
Yes.
Counselor Fay.
Yes.
Counselor McGinnis.
Yes.
Counselor Pollan.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Sweeney.
Yes.
Counselor Winograd.
Yes.
Counselors Zadanowicz.
Yes.
It's unanimous, 9-0.
Thank you, Mr. Davidoff. Okay, number, letter F, Mr. Sweeney.
Madam Mayor, I make a motion to adopt the resolution authorizing the year-end budgetary transfers.
Second.
Motion's been made in seconded, Mr. Ledwith, this is also kind of a, just a bookkeeping item, but if you want to just briefly describe.
Yeah, our Director of Finance, Peter Privater, if you want to come up and summarize that end-of-the-year transfer process, through you, Madam Mayor, thank you.
Sure. Good evening, Pete Privater, Finance Director. This resolution will allow us to transfer funds to balance out all the accounts in the various departments. When we come to you with our projections, we're projecting some departments over and some departments under. Technically, we can't transfer between departments until this resolution is passed, and we can only do it during the last quarter of the fiscal year. So we're basically putting all the accounts in balance.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any, any comments, questions? All right, all those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, we are now to reports from the town manager. Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, we are now to reports from the town manager.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just, just wanted to take a moment to thank the Council for all of your hard work over the course of the last six weeks. We've spent many, many hours together deliberating this budget, and appreciate all of your hard work through that process, and especially your vision for our future, and your support of our directors as we work together to implement that vision and continue to make West Hartford better and stronger. So thank you very much for your, for your support. Also want to thank our finance team, as, as the mayor did as well, for all of their hard work throughout this process. Hopefully I don't see you guys for a couple of weeks, and you take some well-deserved time, because it's been a long four months for you guys. And just as a follow-up to our mayor's comments on our new superintendent, wanted to, again, welcome Paul Vassinis as our next superintendent and congratulate him. You know, Paul has, as folks may know, has dedicated 30 years of his career to, to West Hartford Public Schools. He was a teacher for many years at Conard High School, became an assistant principal, you know, from there moved into further leadership roles, at the same time went off to serve our country over in Afghanistan, came back and, and moved to central office at that point where he was a director, and soon became the Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum Instruction and Assessment. If anyone who's been up on the fourth floor, you can see the pictures of our past superintendents, and there's just a long legacy of excellence. And the Board of Education absolutely made the right decision in hiring Paul to continue that legacy of excellence and continue to work hard to make West Hartford Public Schools what it is today, and, and make it even better in the future. His commitment to children is unmatched by anybody, and we are, as a community, as a council, as a board of education, and as a community, very fortunate to have Paul in this leadership role. So congratulations, Paul. Real quickly, just a couple of quick, yes. Council business and meetings. Next week, we are back to our normal standing committee schedule. So we have Finance and Administration Committee meeting on Monday, May 1, at 5:00 PM. We have our Public Safety Committee Wednesday, May 3, at 8:00 AM. We have a Public Works Facilities and Sustainability Committee meeting, originally scheduled for Thursday, May 4, at 6. We'll move that, cancel that and reschedule it for Thursday, May 11, at 6:00 PM. And I will follow up with all of you. We're going to try to schedule a Community Planning and Economic Development Committee meeting for next Wednesday as well. We have a couple important ordinances related to planning that we would like to get before the Council at a future meeting. So I'll, I'll follow up with all of you on that date. Staff reports. Quick congratulations to Police Officer and Firefighter of the Year. Most of us were able to attend the Exchange Club Award Ceremony last Wednesday, I believe, April 19, where we honored Sergeant Amanda Martin and Apparatus Operator William Shapper, who were selected to receive both the Police Officer and Firefighter of the Year. Sergeant Martin has been a member of the West Hartford Police Department since 2010. She has served in the Patrol Division as a Training Officer, Manager of Crossing Guards, and as a School Resource Officer at Conard High School. She's also a member of the department's Honor Guard, a Crisis Negotiator, an Oral Board Specialist responsible for vetting new candidates. She has received multiple unit citations, a Merit Award, and a Life Saving Award. She was promoted to Sergeant in 2020, and is currently the department's Public Information Officer. Apparatus Officer Shapper has been a member of the West Hartford Fire Department since 2017. He has served in the role of Public Relations Officer for, throughout the COVID-19 pandemic, and his involvement in various activities has positively impacted the community's residents and visitors. He has also served as a paramedic preceptor, and has been instrumental in West Hartford, earning the designation as a heart-safe community. Congratulations to both Amanda and Bill. Outdoor dining applications are being accepted beginning May 1, beginning the 1st. The Planning and Zoning Office will accept site plans and outdoor dining applications under the new ordinance that went into effect on April 11. This applies to all restaurants townwide. For more information, contact our Associate Planner, Brian Publich, at 860-561-7553, or email him at brian公public@westhartfordct.gov. All of that information is on our website. Building on two successful community job and resource fears, the town of West Hartford and the West Hartford Chamber of Commerce promises to bring a bigger, broader event for both employers and job seekers. The Third Annual Job and Resource Fear will be held on Tuesday, May 23, from 4:00 PM to 7:00 PM at the Elmwood Community Center on New Britton Avenue. And wanted to report some great news. The Health District received a $75,000 grant from the National Association of County and City Health Officials. The voice of the country's nearly 3,000 local health departments announced that it will distribute grant awards to local health, health districts to pilot and implement a local health department healthcare-associated infections and antimicro, microbial resistance project. The West Hartford Bloomfield Health District was one of 11 health districts in the country, and the only one in the Northeast to receive this $75,000 grant. So kudos to our staff at the Health District. And that summarizes my report this evening. Happy to answer any questions that the Council had.
That's amazing news. Okay, questions for Mr. Ledwith? All right, very good. I, I would just ask that the list of meetings, I know it'll be on Word docs at some, I mean, Word docs, Board docs at some point, but if we could have an email, I think that would help everybody, making sure that we're, know where we need to be. I, just a follow-up, congratulations again to, to Paul Vassinis. I mean, we were, we're just so thrilled that your, your commitment to West Hartford continues, and we're just so glad to see you in leadership, in this leadership role. National Library Workers' Day is today, actually, a time to recognize library professionals. I think they're closed now, and probably most of them are in bed, but, or maybe, watching TV. I don't know, probably reading a book. West Hartford Public Library has 92 full-time and part-time staff at three locations, Noel Webster, Bishop's Corner, and Faxton, but you can say thanks tomorrow. So please do stop by and say thanks for all the work that they do on community engagement, enrichment, and development. We're so grateful. With, the town is seeking a singer for Black National Anthem for Juneteenth. The Planning Committee would like a passionate voice to perform this year's Black National Anthem. Submissions are due by May 5, at 5:00 PM, and should be no longer than a two-minute recording of Lift Every Voice. And please submit your recording to ConcernedParentsOfColor@WestHartford, W H, sorry, at gmail.com. Registration is open for Celebrate West Hartford Fund Run. Online preregistration races, race spaces are now open at www.celebratewesthartford.com. Runners of all ages, speeds, and abilities will take to the streets on Sunday, June 11, and you will celebrate. It's awesome. So please, please run. Ronnie, are you running? I don't know. Okay. I have a wedding, so. Pastel paintings by, I know, so run. Pastel paintings by Gina Trus, Truswitz, May 4, sorry if I didn't get that right. The opening reception will be held 5 to 7. This reception is free and open to the public, and will remain open until June 19. Colonial Child Adventure Camp for ages 8 to 12 will step back in time, and will be held Monday, Wednesday, Friday at the Noel Webster House. To learn more, you can give them a call or visit their website. Any other, Mr. Cortez, any other announcements?
May I?
Oh, Ms. Fay, go ahead.
Um, I just want to let everybody know that King Philip School is doing their play, Charlie and the Chocolate Factory, on Thursday evening, I think Saturday too, but it should be on the website. So come on out and support it. It should be fun.
Thank you, Ms. Fay.
Thank you.
Mr. Cortez.
And West Hartford United Methodist Church continues to do the diaper drive, and also feminine hygiene products, and any hygiene products, because, you know, usually, you know, we, we focus on food and securities throughout the year, but when it comes to the hygiene products, diapers, and things of that nature, those are costly, and a lot of times, snap, you know, people who are on SNAP can't, you know, use it on that card. So it's, you know, it'd be great, and it supports our food pantry in town. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cortez, and I, Ms. Pollan.
Yes, just a note that there is going to be a celebration of our recently retired town clerk, Essie LeBrow, and that celebration's coming up on May 4, and will also be a fundraiser for WHCI. So would encourage people to attend, and toast to Essie and to WHCI.
Thank you, Ms. Pollan. That was, I think, I, we did get a text reminder on that, so thank you for that. I also want to thank the Rotary Club. I actually am a Rotarian, and last week they did an incredible food drive from Costco to our Town That Cares, and really stocked the shelves. That was thousands and thousands of dollars in food, and we're so grateful for their volunteering to do that. And, okay, anything else? All right. Okay, Mr. Sweeney, the last item?
Yeah.
Corporation Counsel, I didn't ask Mr. Dodge anything.
Madam Mayor, I have no formal report on behalf of my office. I would like to thank you for funding all of our positions, and, great.
Those, I did not, I, I'm sorry, Gina, I did not thank Gina Veron, and, and you for, in that director bucket, so thank you for that. Anyway, all right, with that, any questions for Mr. Dodge? Okay, with that, Mr. Sweeney, number 12. Oh, without objection, I make a motion, we adjourn. Any objections? We are adjourned. Thank you all.